Good evening and welcome to the regular town board meeting for the town of Tuscon. September tenth, twenty twenty four. We're following the meeting in order. Please join in.
I'd like to introduce you to the class. The United States of America. And we're doing public, which is grand. One nation. And you can live the law with liberty and justice for all. Yeah. It's a strange little problem. It will provide.
There's no presentation this evening, so one twenty-four is a payment of bills. General expended eighty thousand, one hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Highway ninety-six thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars and four cents. Order eighteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-four dollars and twenty-one cents. Sewer seventeen thousand, one hundred and seventy-nine dollars and seventy-four cents. The lighting district, four hundred and ninety-one dollars and twenty-seven cents. For a total of two hundred and thirteen thousand, five hundred and seventeen dollars and twenty-six cents. Uh, Cass and Kevin did the bills.
No problem.
Everything's good. A motion to pay the bills as presented.
Some move.
I have a motion, a second.
Second.
Further conversation, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Uh, division reports for those that are not read here at the meeting, they are online or they will be online. Conservation Advisory Council, uh, this was submitted by Jane Luxinger, the CAC members, the health of the town clerk's office have nailed the community vision survey to every taxpayer. It is according to your vision for the future of Tuscon being included in the final open space and recreation plan. Complete that simple survey online or for a hard copy, the hard copies, please return to the town hall. If you wish to take the survey online, it is www.tusconopenspacerecreation.com. Um, there should be a link to that on the website also. Um, and Jane, before she left, asked me to say the importance of making sure that people return that survey. And the importance that it's going to have in figuring out the future for our open space and recreation. Uh, and grants. The water infrastructure project Delaware Engineering continues to work on the projects. Uh, the upper Delaware council, the final two thousand twenty-three report for our open and recreation plan phase one was accepted. And our award of ten thousand dollars has been received. We await decision on our application for phase two of the open space and recreation plan, which is where Jane is at right now. The National Fish and Wildlife, the work continues. The T-Mobile grant for fifty thousand dollar town hall renovation upgrades was not awarded. There were over five hundred applications and only twenty-five were chosen. We are encouraged to reapply. Solvo one eighty is looking for closure on the community development grant. We need to submit an update by the October one meeting. Water and sewer.
Can we, there was no meeting, uh, any meeting because it was Labor Day and Dave had a conflict. So we will meet on September sixteenth at nine. Um, well, three, as I think I mentioned in the last meeting, the it's been declining by about twenty percent in the last six months. There, we use two different people to try and pull out the pipe to get to the pump, but it's snagged somewhere in the bedrock. So it's really a worst case scenario. We have to dig a new well. Before we dig a new well, uh, we need to get approval of that by the Department of Health. So Dave's working with Delaware Engineering to get approval of that for the Department of Health. Because the well three is slightly compromised, um, we need to, we need to prioritize getting well two back online. That was shut down a couple of years ago because of some road haul.
Um, well, yeah, well, two was not something that was used uh, for several years, but it was a backup well that we always kept available for situations like this. Sometime prior to twenty twenty, it was taken offline totally. Um, my understanding was they cannibalized some of the stuff to do other things within the department. So which leads us to what your next target will probably be.
Well, two.
The one that's down behind my pants.
But so that just needs to, that's probably going to need a lot of regulatory hurdles as well. So those uh, need to get, that needs to get back online. So God forbid something happens to well one or, or uh, or so we're on top of that. Um, Craig's working on bid packages to replace the generator at the sewer plant. And we're working with our cap solutions to get a mailing out in October of a income survey letters to um, people in the water sewer district uh, that will, we do, after we do the income survey, we may be uh, eligible for more grants and loan possibilities. That'll go out in October. Uh, Becky's pretty much signed off on the version I said to you, she just wants a return day. And something we can talk about at the sixteenth meeting is we want to do, we want to include a self, a stamped self-addressed envelope. Just to encourage, you know, reply. So we can talk about that.
Now Delaware Engineering, uh, I believe is also looking for funding assistance for well number three.
Yes, that's, I think those are part of the conversations. The Jane and David had.
Right, and that's because they feel that the the damage that was done to the well was due to the earthquake.
Yeah, it could have been, it, it's the most likely answer to the mystery because there was an earthquake centered in Dover-ish New Jersey. Or uh, uh, on April sixth, I think, or April eighth. So shifting bedrock. It, you know, why did this suddenly happen? And that's, that's a likely answer. Whether that, that force majeure.
Yeah. I don't know, dude.
I don't know, I don't know.
That kills the insurance aspect.
Good. That's, that's the health policy.
Yeah.
Uh, Tuscan Youth Commission, Kalahari rooms are available. Uh, the youth club after school program begins September the eighteenth. Um, there's a carousel family event September the fifteenth. Uh, a Lakeland fall family outing. Um, my understanding is this is pumpkin and apple picking and family event. They can contact the youth for more information on that. And the Halloween haunted house DJ movie in Trump or Treat it for Delaware, October nineteenth. And preparation is underway for that.
And we also submitted for uh, heat state. We won't hide it for the end of the show.
Uh, Parks and Public Space Committee, the next meeting is September the sixteenth at five P M. Any questions from the board on any of the reports here? Not, we're going to move into old business, the town hall AC heat pump split units. Uh, because we did not get the grant that Jane had attempted to get, we do have the hopes for the heating and uh, air conditioning system that we wanted to get in. And I, I believe the board had discussed that in the past that if we didn't get the grant, then we would move all over uh, beginning that particular part of the renovation. Jane left with the quote, so I don't the exact numbers, but I know we had had them before. Is this something the board wants to?
There. They're not right there.
In her stuff, I'm not going to go through her stuff.
He should have. It's like.
Yeah. But I. Right there. Um, is that something the board wants to continue to pursue? I know, I would like to pursue it, uh, one who, we should utilize less uh, oil. Um, two, we'll have better humidity control in here for the odors that we've been getting. Um, and I believe that this system went in in two thousand and six or two thousand and six.
Yeah, it's, it's another, I don't know, you know, energy uh, that's what is it, when, when you put in split systems, you get a sort of ghost or.
Yeah. Yeah, it would be, it would be in the favor of who's our.
Yeah, they're terrific in terms of, uh, just turning on the dehumidifier, I think would help with the kind of odors and dampness.
Um.
You guys are all happy in the offices with your splits, right?
They're phenomenal, even in the winter, um, we didn't use the oil at all.
Yeah.
And we used.
Um, since I do not have the numbers in front of me, I would make a motion to authorize the supervisor to take the quote, the previous quotes, the lowest quote that we've got were the heat pumps that were on the T-Mobile brand.
They were in the thirty-ish range.
But they're less than that.
Yeah. Can we, can we do the other?
Actually, you know what, we can either wait for that or I'm going to end up having a recess meeting, so we don't have to do that.
Yeah, I would just, I, I would like to vote on a number.
Um.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's usually it. And Crystal is actively finding. Uh, three point two or pavilion, uh, we have started to get some quotes in to arrive for the concrete. Um, we're still waiting for a couple more. Um, I spoke with Jim Prowley and Don Niger, uh, reference to the concrete and is the base for this. And they are both of the opinion that due to the cost factor, they would rather see it be a stone layer and either macadam on the top or leave it as a stone and go with uh, to go with the piers for the uprights.
So it'd be like a gravel surface?
It would either be a gravel surface or a macadam surface, uh, because we get the millings that they use for the road surfaces. And they could use the milling to the blacktop on top of it. It wouldn't be a hot blacktop next down, he would use the millings when they when they dig up some of the, yes, well, they remill them and then they use them like on some of the dirt roads.
So it'll be like crush?
Not really, it actually comes out as a black macadam.
Would that be hot?
It shouldn't.
It's under shade.
Yeah.
It's not so hot, but.
But that's one of the things, it could either be stone or that. Uh, I know Greg is online.
When you say stone, what do you mean?
Uh, like crushed stone. Um, oven, it would be permeable, but it wouldn't be paving or like, it wouldn't be like slates. No, no, um, because Jane has an October one deadline to have a yea or nay or what we're going to do with it. Um, I was looking to the board because Greg's not here and I think we should have the full board here. Uh, recessing this meeting to a date that is determined by the board so that we can have a discussion with the quotes and with what Jim and uh, Jim and uh, Donnie have said regarding, you know, something that's less expensive than.
The, I'm sorry, do you have a quote on? Idea?
Uh, we haven't got all of those, but how many quotes?
Two so far. We, we have a so concrete first, what you, you're talking about like paving it if you were. Parties which are coming in around twenty thousand, twenty-three thousand, just first minute. And that would be by waiting for the test dating, playing gravel. So then they could easily, I mean, it was a perfect thing, it's the right one for free. Or you know what I mean? Yeah, it's still a little bit different.
But I think having the full board here to discuss that would be.
Yeah, and Greg's the parks.
And it would give us. Right, and it would give us also time to get the other posts that we were waiting to come in for whatever reason that they haven't. Um, had time to research that before. Is that acceptable to the board? Three point three, um, Ken, there was some discussion about some properties in town that came up at the last meeting and the procedure. The clarified to the board with the procedure would be if somebody enforcement writes them a ticket, they either answer or don't answer the ticket. How far to take it and what, I think the board's looking for some clarity for themselves.
Yeah, well, your, your options are bring up proceeding to justice court, which he would issue a ticket. Uh, if um, it becomes difficult if they just ignore it and don't appear. Because I don't think you're gonna, you don't, you're not going to find a police agency that's going to execute a warrant on a uh. Sure, is that better?
Point it down.
I don't know.
They are, they don't.
Let's give her a good tap on the end. Yeah, there you go.
That's one.
Yeah.
Uh, so, so the problem becomes i- if they don't appear for, for the prosecution of the code violation. If even if the justice court issues a, a, a bench warrant, you're going to have difficulty finding a police agency that's going to execute a bench warrant on a code violation thing. Because you're talking about taking somebody into custody over. The bottom line is if you can't gain compliance by service of notice of violation, summons to or appearance ticket to come in into justice court. Because the only thing that can happen in the justice court, the worst that can happen from the property owner's perspective is they can be found guilty of a code enforcement violation, they may be fined. Well, that, that, the, the justice court does not have the authority to impose what we call injunctive relief, meaning i- issue a declaration that clean up that mess, cure that defect in the building, whatever the, whatever the subject might be of, of, of the prosecution or the complaint. So there's nothing you can, there's no further to go with it that way. Your alternative is to bring an action in New York State Supreme Court, which does have the jurisdiction and the authority to grant that kind of relief. So if they don't comply with the court directive to cure whatever the issue is, then another applicant case, application can be made to hold them in contempt. And that can result in not only monetary sanctions, but even incarceration. So that's the, that's the character, the stick, right?
And that's the part that the building department, when you hear them say, we will do anything we are, we are directed to do because we are the town board and you are the people unemployment. That's what they're saying, is board willing to go that far on these?
We, they can't just go into Supreme Court, they're going to need me or somebody like me to, to represent them in that process. And that's not going to be without expense. So they're going to need the, they both, they're going to need you to authorize it to be done, they're going to need you guys to provide the resources to do it.
And would we be looking for outside counsel on that at your discretion?
I, I, I think it, yeah, I think it depends on, on the nature of it and, and the time that would require work.
And either way, it's going to be an added expense because that's not included in our contract with you.
No, 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 even if I do it, I do it, it's going to be on an hourly basis, right? And anybody's going to do litigation on an hourly basis.
But the Supreme Court is potentially phase two if the justice court.
I mean, generally, you try to get them into justice court and gain compliance that way. I mean, my mindset, although I haven't done this with Jim, but in, in other municipalities where I, I do this type of work. My mindset is getting in there because the object isn't really to find them or in court, I mean, the object of the exercise is to get them to gain compliance. So if you can get them inside of a courtroom in front of a judge, you know, a lot of times.
And that's what we always, we always are looking.
We can work it out.
But we need to have a clear vision of what the end result.
Right, because you, you, there, there's, and it seems to be becoming more of a problem. It's not, this would not be unique to Tuscon. In terms of gaining compliance, people don't seem to be concerned because they think that nothing's going to happen to them. So if, or you're not going to, you're not going to incur the expense and, and direct the resources to it. So they'll wait, so some people have the mindset, they'll wait it out, see what you're going to do. But you do have the recourse, but you've got to put the, the resources to it.
Thank you.
Any other question? Thanks. Did I answer or clarify at least?
Yeah.
I feel like if we don't do anything though, it's.
Correct, and like I said, Jim is fine. He, he just wants to know that he's got the support of the board to go forward. Um, because if, if we don't support taking some sort of enforcement action, then we're going to find out that we've got, well, well, they're not going to do it with this, they're going to do it with that. It, it will become a, it, it may become sticky, it may not, you never know. But it could be something as simple as I'm going to remove the seven cars of the park along ninety-seven.
Well, and with regard to those types of things, I, I have to look at what's in our code book because I have to deal with like five or six of these and I can't remember what's in each respective town's code. But where it comes to cleaning up stuff like that, there, the, the oftentimes the, the code has, or we can put in the code, basically an administrative process where like the junk, the garbage debris on the property that they won't clean up. There's a process that you can follow where we can ultimately, once we follow the process, go give them due process. Where we can actually enter on the property, remove the garbage debris, whatever, and charge it back to them. If they don't pay the bill, we actually levy it back on their taxes, taxes. Last I knew, the county was cooperating and actually allowing that to happen. So depending, so, but you need to know what, what the, what the, what the offending conduct is to see whether it fits within the corners of what's in our, in our code for that type of. That's not going to work for, you know, they've got a building code violation.
No.
You know, these are things that like, we brought up at the last meeting, we've got a seating byway and we've got three very visible issues with outside maintenance in, in vehicles.
Right.
The seating byway. In our town.
Anything else on your whole business? That we got to take care of?
So we want to do the split at the recess?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Yes. Uh, the heat pumps? Okay, we don't.
The salary is fourteen thousand, three eighty and.
Okay, so uh, ultimate mechanical was?
Ultimate mechanical fifteen thousand, three forty-six. The value solutions is fourteen thousand, three. These are from the beginning of the year. The headers.
And the town done business with both of those guys, correct?
Yeah.
They're comparable vendors, so we're obliged to take the lowest of the. Obliged. Yeah.
Okay, so we're still going to need one more, one more in order to meet our procurement policy. So.
You're going to need, if they're that old, Crystal, you're going to need to see whether they're still willing to.
Yeah, we're not bound to, that would definitely.
If you do a recess, then we can contact all the vendors and ask them if they can let us know if these are still.
Right, and we're going to need a third one, so I'll contact the third company, so we will save that for recess. Uh, anything else on your pool business? Uh, new business four point one, to set a date for the fall cleanup day. Um, the clerk has contacted the highway department in October fifth, seems to be the day that will work best for them. Which is the first Saturday of October.
And that doesn't conflict with any like logging days or?
Logging days is October fifth, but we have.
We've done it before, yeah, we did, it's, if we can walk, uh, two garments and they can drop the trash off and come down the logging days. Do you need a motion to approve that enough?
Yes, you have set date.
To set the date for October fifth, I'll make that note. I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Uh, we need to set budget workshops. Uh, last year, I believe we did two. The tentative budget will be to the board by the fifth of October. Uh, we need to have our public hearing by the seventh of November. Um, with the adoption date deadline of November the twentieth, so if we can get it done sooner and get our hearing done sooner, we can approve it sooner. Um, and Greg is still on, so we'll make sure that these dates coincide with him, if you can unmute Greg.
He's unmuted.
Okay. Um, I've got dates in October of twenty, let's see, seven, nine, ten, twenty, twenty-one and twenty-three. So I don't know if any of those were seven, seven, nine and ten is a Monday. Uh, Wednesday, Thursday, I'm sorry.
Evening.
Yeah, it would be. Well, that would be up to the boards, whatever the boards.
Yeah.
Whether one evening or mornings. Nine and ten or five, I mean, seven. We have the, we have the water committee.
Thursday, we have the last report.
Okay, so let's take the tenth off of there. Unless we go earlier.
I can't do Mondays in October.
Okay, so that takes the se- seventh off. Uh, Wednesday, the ninth.
Works good.
Reason? I would ask if they can either be four during the pump or the whole world wants to be here at six. We have the pump till six.
Okay, and so before what time?
Oh, we're standing here in court.
Yeah.
It works.
Okay, so let's do, so when do the kids get out of here?
Kids are out here.
All right. Six fifteen?
Six fifteen.
That's the first one. And we want to do one a week later.
Alan.
We're two weeks, probably two weeks later, it would be the twenty twenty, uh, uh, twenty, twenty-first, twenty-second, twenty-third?
Twenty-third's better for me.
At the traveling, traveling council, then we just. Um, the twenty-third.
Prioritize, that would be great.
Um, twenty-third's okay with me.
Bruce? Good for me.
Pass?
Uh, yes.
And do we want to do the same time, six fifteen, or do you want earlier? Earlier than you, you same time, okay, six fifteen, Greg, six fifteen?
What's the date?
The twenty-third for a budget workshop. We got two budget workshops. I think two should be enough. Um.
I think last year we may have gotten through it in one.
I believe we did.
Yeah.
At what time?
Uh, six fifteen, the twenty-third and the nine. Do we want to go ahead and set a public hearing, uh, at this point in time?
And you can pick kind of the target date, but you can't really publish it until you have, until you have a preliminary budget because you got to, you've got to publish the salaries, but certain salaries and that.
Maybe we can think about that in the next. Uh, and it'll be too late at the next poll, yeah. Because it has to be by the seventh.
Okay.
What was the October meeting?
The ninth.
The ninth.
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third is seven, the sixth.
The, the sixth is not too late of November.
Yeah.
Exactly. Our, here, our, our regular town board meeting isn't until the uh, the twelve, yes. So we couldn't, we couldn't do it at the regular, we couldn't have the public hearing at the regular board meeting because it's, it, we're, we have to have it before the seventh.
Could we do it, um, the same day as our workshop meeting?
That's election day.
Oh. Should we do it the Monday before election day?
That would be the fourth, we've got a park meeting.
Can't do Monday.
In November either, Cass?
No, I have rehearsal every Monday.
We could tentatively set it for the twenty-ninth and does that give you enough time? No, one, two, three, four, five, six, it's hard to get in the paper anyway compared to that.
Could we do that? Could we do it on the thirtieth?
Or just wait till, we could do it on the, we could do it on the sixth. Yeah, we could, why don't we just kind of set it for the sixth, that'll give. Enough time. On the twenty third that we can uh.
Is that the work, that a workshop?
Yeah.
Or?
No, November sixth is on the public hearing. Correct, yeah. But we still have to approve the preliminary.
But you have to adopt the preliminary budget before the public hearing.
Right.
So you would probably be doing that at your, at your October, your October workshop.
Which could be the twenty third, which would be our last.
Which be your last opportunity.
Yeah.
Right, and so when you adopt that, you would publish the the hearing notice for the sixth, you think?
Yeah, the sixth, that gives it's.
Yeah, it's that's enough time to get in the paper because it has to be in the paper at least five, I think.
Five days.
Five days prior to the. To the hearing day.
Does that Wednesday work, the sixth, Greg, the sixth?
Yep.
Yeah.
You played Tetris? My calendar. When's the public here with time? Uh, the sixth? Yeah, six fifteen, six fifteen, stay with that six fifteen more.
Um, I know those dates work for me, but I'm on my computer, so I can't access my calendar right now. Could someone just send me that list of dates? They're all fine. I just wanna make sure I put them on my calendar.
I'll email it.
Thank you.
Other new business?
I'm I'm sorry. Uh, so do we have another date? Do we have the twenty third? Yes, we do.
Yeah, the ninth, the twenty third for workshop and a sixth for hearing. Just to mention the the B fest is. Let me just to mention, mind everyone. You know, it's at the. For Delaware. Fall afterwards. Yeah. I'm mentioning it, but I don't remember the.
There's a sign on the road.
Saturday, September twenty first, alright. Um, if there is no other new business, I will open the floor for some of the comments. I will start here and move to the Zoom. Playbook. Okay, uh, question.
Do we have any ballpark estimate of if well three has to be replaced? What kind of massive job are we talking about and how much in terms of dollars?
I think Don said it was something in the mid thirty thousand, thirty five thousand ish. Yeah, that doesn't count the engineering costs that we would be looking at in order to get the Department of Health approval. We have to have an engineer's report that goes to Department of Health first and the Department of Health will approve the engineering report and then go well there, but that's actually. Smaller number than I. Yeah. Feared. Thank you. Yes, sure.
Hi, my name is Dark Hesi. It's not on. Doesn't sound like. Maybe it was an interesting too. Yeah, that's my fault. There. You can say what you want, nobody will hear you if you don't do a little bit. Okay. If you're leaving, hear me? Um, I've had a number of comments, but I just wanted to look at one thing first. Um, I was asking about the status and I've had been asked about the status of the inoperative lights and not paying for it uh, while they're not working. And I noticed that there was no energy committee report, and I would think that that particular issue would come under that occupancy. So is the energy committee going to issue a report at some point at the status of these lights that are. Year after year and month after month not working?
This is public comment, not question and answer, but yes, it's something to do.
Well, I'll just bring that up then. I think they should have an energy committee report on the status of the lights that are not working. I also think that of the town attorney should look into possibly having. The contract that we have, either have the lights fixed or have them taken off of the blanket uh, charges that we're getting. For any lights that we have fixed or not. Again, if if you had a car that you leased and it wasn't working, would you continue paying the lease payments until it was fixed? I don't think so. Well, and in the case of the inoperative uh, firehouse light. That is owned by Nice Egg, I would think you would be able to say to Nice Egg, fix it or take it out and take it off the books. Uh, about the pavilion. Does anybody know yet about the estimated cost of going ahead with building this building with or without the ADA toilets? And. I think that the town board needs to exercise its judiciary responsibilities. Of not putting any more money into this project until you have some figures and facts as to how much it's gonna cost. And also a decision of do you intend to go ahead with it willy nilly? The ADA public toilets on Main Street issue again. We now have these new businesses open. Have they been advised that they are going to be expected to allow use of their facilities by other than customers frequenting their stores? And that they will also be expected to absorb the additional water charges for any of that use. I don't think they're gonna be compensated for that, but and I don't see how you could order somebody to do something with their own private business. We still have the ludicrous situation of having two porta potty units sitting virtually on top of each other. In a much less traffic area of town on the flats. While there's no. Public toilet on Main Street where there is quite a bit of activity and they are desperately needed. What is the repair status of the town hall ADA entry door? That's truly a violation of the ADA requirements to ensure equal access to all. Has that been fixed? Uh, let's see, the deck. Has anybody discussed what can be done to repair the parts of the deck that are broken and also to try to spruce it up a little bit? It really is looking very shabby. And that's right in the middle of a beautification area, so you're kind of working in co- purposes there if you don't fix it. And the last thing I would like to mention is, again, we had the problem with the timely access to the agenda. Um, for the last part of the new business, there was no agenda displayed on the screen. And there seemed to be a number of items that were being discussed, so. I would again say, I know I've been told that this agenda is fleshed out and available online. I have yet to been able to get those additional comments.
Thank you, Star. Is there any comment from the floor before we move to Zoom? Yes.
I'd like to know about how many acres do the boys scout that? You know?
Do they have currently?
Yeah.
I believe they have somewhere around. Nine thousand.
Nine thousand acres here in Tus.
No, not here in Tuscan. That's nine thousand total. I believe Tuscan is somewhere around eight thousand.
Eight thousand acres. Now, it was mentioned in the survey, uh, something about the scouts and. Is there some kind of a problem that might arise in the future?
Not that I'm.
Oh, I don't quite understand your whole part of the saying. I have it, but I don't.
Yeah, I I, that doesn't.
Uh, it's not a problem. Look, we'll have to read it again if I. The answer is that.
Yeah, and you can either call myself or Jane, and we've been, if we don't have the answers, we can get it.
Thank you.
Any other floor comment before we go to Zoom? Anybody on Zoom? Or comment? Oh, everybody start at once.
I have a comment.
Okay.
I just want everybody, did you say anything yet?
About?
The survey, please. Said it?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I know who not to discuss today. We need to set. A recess for this meeting.
Another day, you mean?
Yes, that way we can do the, uh, we can discuss the pavilion and we can also discuss the split units.
We never had, we never did a vote on the um, budget workshop.
Okay. Well, how about I make a motion that we set the budget workshop for being the ninth of October and the twenty third of October at six fifteen P M. I'll second that and the public hearing for November sixth at six fifteen P M. Have a second, ballot favor?
Alright.
I propose, thank you.
The only thing is, I know you just wrote it on, the public is used to six thirty meetings, so if you're having a public hearing, I think you should see six thirty, not.
The public turn usually before the.
Well, that's why.
He's not setting the public hearing yet, he has to wait until the board is out with the preliminary budget the next spring of the meeting, and then he's official.
Okay.
Uh, so recess.
We set the date.
For the recess? No. I'm sorry.
Fall cleanup?
Yes, we did set the, that was the fifth of October. So.
Uh, what's earliest date for the recess? How much time is needed before?
I'm thinking the, at least the eighteenth would be the earliest. I don't think we wanna. Do it later than that, either the eighteenth or the twenty fifth, both of those are Wednesdays.
I can't do the eighteenth, but I can do the twenty fifth.
I can do the twenty fifth.
Twenty fifth is the better name.
They're both fine.
What did you say, Greg?
I can do the twenty fifth.
Okay. Uh, six thirty? Get the kids enough time to get out? Okay, so before I recess to the twenty fifth of October at six thirty of the first September, I'm sorry, thank you. Because I'm looking at October and November. Um, other board discussion comments? Rickets? Crystal? You look like you wanna say something. Okay.
You disagree that I didn't get the, that we didn't get the.
I did, yes. I went through your whole thing and I put emphasis on the the survey.
Oh, good. That was good, Ben.
Okay, motion for recess to the twenty fifth of September at six thirty P M. I'll second that. Ballot favor? Thank you, folks.